Good evening and welcome. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order. Today is Thursday, July 24, 2025, and it's 6:30 PM. We will begin the meeting with the Nishtenon Tribe recognition. I have asked Vice Mayor Sisi to lead that.
My pleasure. We acknowledge that the Nishtenon people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are Nishtenon land that was never ceded, and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nishtenon land, we support the Nevada City Rancheria Nishtenon Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thanks Lou. Councilmember Peterson, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be honored. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim and I is listening to me. All right, Madam Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sisi?
Here.
Mayor Klein?
Here.
Our colleague, Councilmember Fernandez, is unfortunately unable to attend this meeting.
Stuck in the Denver Airport.
Stuck in the Denver Airport. All right, time for the adoption of the agenda. Now's the time for any agenda modifications. Let me know if you'd like to make additional changes to the agenda, pull consent items, and are there any recusals to announce?
No.
Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda. Second?
Okay. I've got a motion by Vice Mayor Sisi and a second by Councilmember Peterson. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That seems like it worked well. It's time for presentations. We've got one proclamation tonight, and I'm going to read it.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Wonder why?
Very fitting.
At the last meeting, I announced this would be the Year of Advanced Music Appreciation in our fine city, and now I'm going to read some remarks to that effect. This is the Year of Advanced Music Appreciation from July 2025 to June 2026. Whereas this small community nestled in the foothills of the Sierra Nevada has a rich history of music, musicians, and musical venues, during the last 175 years as Nevada City and the many millennia before that as Ustama, music has been a part of this land. And whereas, what makes music amazing in Nevada City is the unique and eclectic combination of music, the people that create it, and the places that they play. And whereas, given Nevada City's size, one might be surprised by the incredibly deep bench of musical talent that has come from or that is drawn to here. And whereas, from classical to modern, pop to blues, country to EDM, rock from classic to prog, and even Latin Grammy Award-winning music, music of all types and from all corners of the world can be heard here. And whereas, from those known only locally to international stars, it is the people that make the music that are at the heart of what makes Nevada City music great. Among these artists, there are Tony, Emmy, Grammy, and American Music Award winners, but as these organizations give out multiple awards every year, the most impressive and exclusive award could be the Nevada City Chamber of Commerce Live Music Award, which grants only one award per year. Whereas the places that these musicians play range from the steps of City Hall to the longest operating West Coast performing arts venue, the Nevada Theater, from bars and restaurants, the Foundry and the Stone House, and from the backyards and parlors of our homes, music is everywhere in Nevada City. And whereas, during the coming year, the City Council will share the music of our city in various ways. Look for scheduled events and even secret pop-up events coming soon and into 2026. We encourage you to visit us at www.nevadacityca.gov/advancedmusicappreciation to learn more about Nevada City music, the people that create it, and the places that they play at. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Nevada City declares July 2025 through June 2026 as the Year of Advanced Music Appreciation and invites those who live, work, play, and thrive in our community to engage in the local music scene, attend live music performances, attend the discussions at City Council meetings, or visit our webpage dedicated to Nevada City music dated on this 24th day of July 2025.
You have to yourself.
And then I hand it to me. Great.
Want to take a picture with it?
Would you hold it?
I have plenty of pictures of me with music. Great. Thanks, everyone, for listening to that. It's time for public comment. Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that any member of the public may address the City Council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on the consent calendar and each agenda item at the time it is heard. Got three minutes each. Here we go. Hi Lori.
Hi. Lori Overholzer, 310 Nevada Street. I'm here representing the Nevada Street Willow Valley Neighborhood Association. We are here because the developer of the HEW site has been very visible lately with a new proposal. Over the past 13 years, we've been having meetings with him. He's had seven proposals that ranged in size from 96 to 210 units, none of which ever came to the City Council. So we thought it would be a good idea to remind the council of our position. Our group formed about 20 years ago when the county started the process of selling the HEW, and then 13 years ago, developer Bill Litchfield bought the 12 acres for $95,000. During that time, we met many times with Mr. Litchfield. We did our own studies. We responded to all of his proposals. We even organized the huge Laughco showing. We worked on that citywide to support keeping our sphere of influence the size it was because we believe that the city will protect the character of our neighborhoods. Our position of many years has widespread neighborhood buy-in. The idea is a project that is compatible with our historic and rural wildland urban interface neighborhood. We have five key points. One, single-family density on the 7.5 acre flat parcel, which includes the building. It could be, the housing could be in the HEW building or not, or it could be small houses or medium-sized houses or both, different sizes of lots, maybe some ADUs, but the numbers really do matter. The traffic generation from a large Roseville-type project would ruin the quality of life in our neighborhood. Number two, the steep 4.5 acres on Deer Creek should be zoned for city open space, not with a number that can be transferred up to the 7.5 acres. Three, we would like a development agreement that ensures the maximum unit number so that it cannot be changed in the future. Zoning no longer alone ensures what the number will be on a piece of property. Number four, the project should comply with the city's strong affordable housing ordinances, which are essentially 30% affordable housing, a mix of housing sizes, 20% ADUs, and the project size maximum. Five, on the HEW building itself, Litchfield has told us many times that he needs additional housing density or mixed use so he can afford to renovate the building. We don't think that the HEW renovation is a community priority. We've spoken to the historical society, and we like a compromise that keeps just the front 20 or 30 feet of the two most historic buildings in the courtyard area for community rooms. So that's our basic proposal. We'll be there through the whole process, and we will definitely ask for your support. Thank you.
Perfect.
She's a pro.
Hello. Thank you. I'm Dr. Mark Ritchie. This is my wife Judy. She's going to talk also. Anyway, we've been residents of Nevada County for 37 years, since I finished my medical training at UC Irvine in radiology. And I've worked at the Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital for 31 years. We lived on Willow Valley Road for 37 years. The last 27 years of that, we bordered the HEW building property. We have the largest border of anyone with that property. So we're very much concerned about what's happening there. I looked up some of the history. I was looking up history. I wanted to know what the building was about. And what I could find on the web, besides its being used as a hospital, mental health, and some sites said prisoners were kept there for a while. The most significant things I found in the history of that building are that two murders occurred there, and that was in 2001. I was working at the hospital at the time, and we were making plans to, we didn't know what was happening at the time, and thought maybe there were more people going to be coming to the hospital. So we were gearing up for that. But my concern also was my wife and children, and fortunately, they were not at home right next door to that when it happened. The murders resulted in Laura's Law, which I hope you know of, concerning mental health. The other significant thing I could find searching the web was that people think that building is haunted. Lots of people do. In fact, the caretaker that lives there is sure that it's haunted. But when you look up people's reactions, people that go there, hundreds of people, go there and look at the building, they say it's creepy and spooky. And so for my wife and I, we don't see any need for keeping that building for history purposes, the history of murders, the fact that it's creepy. I would rather that Nevada City was known for its gold rush history, its preserved Old Town, its architecture, its small-town atmosphere, and the wonderful natural beauty that we enjoy. So we would be in favor of tearing that building down.
And I'll make mine short because I know that your time is important to you. And I just want to say that we love living in Nevada City. We've raised our kids here, and Willow Valley Road is a beautiful street. We'd like to keep the impact as low as possible. We'd like to keep the traffic down, and we'd like to be able to get out in case of fire. And there's not very many ways to do that. So those are our concerns. We really do want a low-impact project there. We understand progress is important, and we do know that something needs to be done, but we would like to keep it as low as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark and Judy. Any other public comment? All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Before we take action on the consent calendar, we'll hear any public comment on consent calendar items only. Do we have any public comment on consent calendar items? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion and a second.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll give that a second.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Peterson and a second by Councilmember Fleming. Any objections to the motion? Hearing none. Motion carries. Great. Onto business. Number six, the consideration of a presentation from the Greater Cement Hill Neighborhood Association on the acquisition of the Milopelo property for open space. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I invite Will Hart and Eileen Jorgensen from the Greater Cement Hill Neighborhood Association to join us. They were here not that long ago presenting in front of the Community Services Committee, sharing their intent to acquire the Milopelo property for preservation purposes. We provided a letter of support for a grant that they were applying for after that committee meeting that they're pursuing in partnership with the Sierra County Land Trust. And then the committee asked that the item come before the council for you to provide any additional input or see what support might be appropriate. So Will and Eileen are here with us tonight, and Donna's going to pull up a couple of images that they want to be able to share with you and tell you the same story that the Community Services Committee heard. This is a cool little piece of property that they'll tell you more about, but just oriented to everybody at home. Cement Hill and Highway 49, left-hand side, right up against our city-owned property there at Hirschman's.
Good evening, Will. Yeah.
Hi. I tried to change my talk, and I wish I had a beatbox and I could do it in rap. That would be so perfect. But here I am.
The year of music.
The year of music. That would be great.
Everybody has to sing.
Well, I want to start off by thanking this team of people and how well you work together and what you're doing for our town. As a longtime merchant, I so appreciate what you're all doing here. So thank you.
Thank you.
As a steering member of the Greater Cement Hill Neighborhood Association, I'm excited to be here tonight to inform you that our neighborhood is the lead agent in the acquisition of the Milopelo property on Highway 49. We have recently come before Nevada City's Community Service Committee, as Sean said, who blessed our efforts and provided a letter of support, which was included in our recent grant proposal to Caltrans. Our goal is to acquire the property through grants or grants and then transfer the property to Nevada City as an extension of the Hirschman's Pond and Trail open space. This site is an important cornerstone in our Cement Hill neighborhood and the western gateway to our historic town. It's a valuable community asset that holds significant historical and environmental value, and now is the time to preserve it. But why now? Nevada County government projects are expanding significantly along Highway 49. Besides the Eric Rude Campus, the Sheriff's Office, the Wayne Brown Jail, a solar field, and transitional housing facility have been established. The union reports that a regional training and dispatch center, a new correctional medical facility, and an indoor firearms training center are now proposed within a half mile of this intersection. The union has also reported that the county has contracted with the U.S. Forest Service to lease nine acres adjacent to the regional training center to build their future campus. And we are all hoping that the new courthouse occupies the present Forest Service site. We can honestly, in the future, be calling this corridor Government Row. We also know that Caltrans is planning two or three roundabouts and another traffic light sometime in the future. Thankfully, all these projects are within Nevada City's sphere of influence and subject to the 1986 general plan designation and ordinance that seeks to protect and preserve this roadway as a scenic corridor. This small corner of earth has a rich history. Once part of a lucrative American Hill mining area, this site was ravaged by hydraulic gold mining in the 1850s. According to Dom Lindar's excellent book, The Ditches of Nevada City, this area was one of the earliest hydraulic gold mining operations in California, yielding millions of dollars' worth of gold. This unique area, the area's unique geology, was chosen by the Nishtenon for their village of Ustama, and later Chief Kelly operated a dump nearby. By preserving this site now, we can honor its rich history, cultural significance, and natural beauty, which aligns with the city's scenic corridor goals. In conclusion, in 2004, Nevada City purchased the 35 acres at the edge of the city that has become and beloved the Hirschman's Pond and Trail. This 2.2 Milopelo acreage adjacent to the Hirschman's was not included in the sale by the family, but now they have signed a letter supporting what we're doing here. The Hirschman's Trail is beloved by tourists and locals, and our goal after acquisition is to reunite this property to ensure a pleasing entrance to Nevada City and Cement Hill neighborhood, provide a visual buffer to the Hirschman's Pond, expand parking and recreational opportunities, and honor the site's rich history and cultural significance.
All right.
Want to introduce Will Hart, the president of the Cement Hill Neighborhood.
Oh, that's my line.
Okay.
Hi, nice to be here with you all this evening. The Greater Cement Hill Neighborhood Association has been together for 33 years. It's been a long-going organization, and we're proud of what we do. We cover 467 families over eight square miles from Highway 49 to Excelsior Ditch Camp Road and from North Bloomfield to the Yuba River. And the Greater Cement Hill Neighborhood Association in Nevada City have always had a good neighbor relationship. And I'd like to shout out right now to Evan McLennithan, who has made that relationship even better.
Go Evan.
We have shared goals and common values. It's that spirit that brings us here tonight. We would both like to see the Milopelo property united with Hirschman's Pond to add beauty and more functionality to one of our more utilized recreational areas. We also have a vision for the reclamation of the property. I'm going to give you a brief overview as prepared by BizNet Landscape Architects. We realize that this work would require another grant, but feel it's important to look to the future and have a plan to move forward. There was originally a wetland that we would like to see restored. This would require removing an old haul road that runs across the property and doing a small bit of excavation to create a seasonal stream and place for water to collect. A hydrologist has looked at the property and determined the work feasible. Runoff from Cement Hill would be the main water source. There would be a mixture of revegetation areas and fuel management. Removal of Himalayan blackberry, Scotch broom, and annual grasses would happen across the entire two acres. There would then be supplemental native species planting for the intermittent stream area in blue, if you look to the map, the seasonal moist-to-wet meadows in yellow, and forest management in the green areas. Laird's Ravine, as shown in purple, would also be reestablished through the removal of invasive plants and replanted with indigenous species. There could be trail added to connect to Hirschman's Pond Trail, and supplemental parking could be a consideration as existing parking lot is often overflowing. We would ask the city for a letter stating its willingness to accept the property, and we would like to meet with the city staff to work out additional details. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to welcome the new mayor and thank the old mayor for all your great work. You're a wonderful bunch of people.
Thanks so much. Thanks for that.
And I'd also like to thank our neighbors who showed up tonight to support us.
Thank you. Sean, is it appropriate to ask for public comment on this?
Yep.
Great. Any public comment on this topic? Evan, you can just come up and say thanks if you want to.
Paid promotion.
Okay, no public comment. Mr. Peterson, what do you think?
Councilmember Judy.
Mr. Councilmember, what do you think?
No, I, so we heard this before, and I think, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, I think this is a great project. I think it's important for the city. I think the way it connects to Hirschman is just, really gives us a lot of opportunity to expand that area, as you identified, it's very, very popular. I just will always urge caution when accepting mining property and things like that so that we understand, should it come our direction, what exactly we're saying yes to. Because around here, you know, I used to work at the airport, all you got to do is fly Nevada County a little bit and see all the dead spots. Mercury, cyanide, all the stuff that was used in mine. So we just need to understand that and then figure out, like, what steps it would take to mitigate it if there was something that was found.
There was an in-depth EIR done for the property, for the courthouse site, and we've gotten access to that, and it looks pretty clean.
Okay.
There's no real red flags that we can say.
There's different levels of EIRs, and we just, you know, we're the bureaucrats here.
Just real quickly, it was a phase-one EA was done.
It was done, okay. All right. But otherwise, you know, we should, I'm of the opinion we should support and assist you in any way we can in acquiring this property as a mutual benefit for all of us.
Yeah.
You know, I appreciate your presentation, and thank you for doing the research and all the due diligence and everything. And you've obviously got your ducks in a row with the EIR, phase one, and understanding that. I think it's a very nice gesture for a neighborhood association to take down a piece of property and want to give it to the city. Now, that may come with some strings attached, and we'll figure out if there are any, but, you know, it fits right in, as you well articulated, to what we're doing, what's going to be done, our scenic highway designation and all that. So really appreciate all the work that you guys have done. Your neighborhood associate is one of the best. And this is important. It's important, this issue came up when the courthouse was there. And, you know, to have a courthouse right there for various reasons would not work, right? And I know you guys know that. But, you know, I think everybody else would have felt that way, and hopefully the JAC feels that way. I think they will understand that that's a non-starter for us. There is some, there's a little bit of, you know, stickiness because of the fact that this is still in play with the, you know, the judicial commission, but, you know, that's going to be finished any minute now. And we're hopeful that it plays out the way we want to. So I just want to say thank you. You know, with the caveats that Mr. Peterson, Councilmember Peterson articulated, you know, that's just something we have to do as far as our due diligence. But, you know, like, you guys know that there's probably no issues, and we'll probably find none. But, you know, we wouldn't be doing our city duty if we didn't look at that and figure out what that costs, you know, and then the maintenance side of the things, too. And that, I hope, will be wrapped into this other grant that you guys are going to do for that restoration work. And I think that's just really awesome. Reestablishing streams, I think this is a, you know, very, very good project. Have you guys talked to the Sierra Streams Institute? They've done some work over there, and, you know, they're pretty aware of the wetlands and things like that. So you guys are on it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
This looks like a puzzle piece that was missing, and it is now in play. I'm very glad that you guys took the initiative to do this. The reestablishment of a wetland is a wonderful idea. The removal of invasive species, especially the Scotch broom and the Himalayan blackberry, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Yeah. I love the Hirschman's property and visiting that, and this just is going to support that and expand that in such a cool way. And it couldn't have been done by anyone but your group. So thanks for taking the lead on that. Sean, do you feel like you have direction? We think that there should be a letter.
I think the only other outstanding question for me would be if the council would like to provide me direction to leverage our resources, if possible, seeking grants that only the city could apply for, seeking city could apply for, seeking partnership with, obviously Lori's got a good handle on what they're doing, but there may be opportunities that only could come through us, and then we'd be in partnership with them to, you know, instead of us writing a letter to them, they'd be writing a letter to us saying we're trying to fulfill their mission. We'd be happy to do that, but I'd love to get that for you guys.
Yeah.
We want to be pen pals with these people.
Perfect.
The letter that we need now, you gave us the letter, the threat, just supported in general, the letter we need now is one, if we get to phase two of this particular grant that we put, we'll need a letter that says if you do take the property, that you believe you will take the property, and that you would do the O and M, you would own it, you would obviously do the O and M on it. But you don't really have to do that until you find out if we hit phase two.
Yeah.
Cool. You good? Great. Thanks to you both.
Thanks, guys. You're all a group.
Thank you. Wonderful presentation.
Thanks, everyone.
But I'm still imagining the beatbox.
And speaking of that, business item number seven, consideration of a special event application from Unit J for a parking lot concert on September 5th, 2025.
Justin and Natalie Rainey joining us at the end. You're welcome to have the kids come up if you want to.
Yeah.
We can bring chairs up here, whatever they're comfortable with.
Hello, Mr. and Mrs. Rainey.
Hi. Good evening, everyone.
Making time, getting this on the agenda.
I'll kick us off real quick here, just briefly. This is a special event application from them for a concert in their shared parking lot in the backside SPD there. There have been similar events there over the years, but not by Unit J, of course. This is scheduled for September 5th. There's no offsites, no street closures or impacts that are related to that. Staff's internally reviewed the event, and there's no additional conditions placed on it, like sometimes you'll see, obviously, if there's street closures or event vendors or things like that. So, with that, I will turn it over to them to explain what it's all about and what good times will be had.
Yeah. You covered most of it, but basically, September 5th, we want to do an outdoor concert in our parking lot. That's under SPD, right in front of our clubhouse. There's no street closures, like you said. The parking lot is private. Ben Painter owns the parking lot. He's given us approval. All the neighbors have been notified. My wife delivered printed letters to everybody. We will have a small stage and bathrooms for the event. Everything else will be removed that night, the night of, but the stage and the bathroom will be removed the morning after. The event is actually from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on that Friday. Most businesses will be closed at 5:00 p.m. there, and we won't actually start till probably six or so, make sure all the businesses are out of there. The few businesses that'll be open, I foresee just extra traffic for them, Calvin and Organic's, Jernigans, a few other people. We're thinking general public tickets. We sold in advance for $20, $25 at the door. We obviously have memberships at our club. All of our members will be allowed to come for free. There'll be two sections of the event. There'll be the parking lot, and there'll be our clubhouse, obviously, and our clubhouse patio. Members will be allowed to go through both into our clubhouse. The general admission would just be the parking lot and watching the show. I'll put up temporary fencing. The way that parking lot is situated, it's kind of a horseshoe. It's all kind of protected with buildings. There's one opening going in there, and so I'll just do temporary fencing to block that off with a secondary gate right there. Yeah, I think we're thinking three portable bathrooms, six trash cans should do it. We're going to have Cousin Maine's lobster food truck there for food.
Oh, my goodness.
That'll be inside the fenced area.
I am so hungry.
And we may ask another food truck if we sell enough tickets, but I feel like that would be enough for this small event.
Oh, I love it.
There is, the Queen of Hearts Mobile Tattoo Trailer is going to be at the fairgrounds. They are getting approval for that right now with the county, I believe, and they're going to actually ask for this date, too, as well, if they get approval for that. The, we'll do a beer line, just beer line outside of, in the fenced location only, of course, and that'll always be fenced off. No one will be allowed to leave the fenced area with that. We'll obviously get the ABC, the one-day permit for that. They need, we're not supposed to do it until 30 days before that to get that, though. The members will have access, though, to our social club, of course, and that we have a full bar in there, and so they'll be able to come and go to different areas, but the general public will not be able to do that. We're thinking right now, three employees at the doors, two in the parking lot, one on our club patio, which we always have anyway, three security employees just kind of roaming around. Obviously, the police are definitely welcome, but I don't feel like they'd be necessary. We got, we added Nevada City, Nevada City to our general liability insurance for a million dollars, and we don't really see this being a huge event. We're not, as a social club, we're not allowed to get a lot of revenue from non-members, but we are allowed to get 30% of our annual revenue from non-members. So, we can probably do one of these or two of these a year, maybe here and there, and so this is going to be our first attempt. We just have an artist coming that I feel would be, we could have more people see him than we can hold inside and would sound better outside. Our clubhouse has low ceilings. It's kind of echoey, so this is why we are coming to you guys and asking for approval for the outdoor concert. That's about it. If you guys have any questions.
Great. We'll just let's see if there's public comment in the room first. Do the kids want to come to just talk about you guys as parents? No, shaking their heads? Okay, I'll follow up on that later. All right, I'll take it to the table. Councilmember Peterson.
You know, I like, I love Nevada City. I could get a lobster roll and a tattoo with the signature. I'm good.
That's all he needed.
I'm a big fan, and I apologize for not having been there.
I know.
I know. I will become a member before this happens. No, I'm a big fan, and you've done more security than people do for a whole downtown event, so I think you're really on top of, you know, making this right and doing your first one, so you don't impact the neighborhood. That's a big thing for all of us, obviously. You're obviously got good relationships with your neighbors, and that's really important. But, you know, who's the, who's the artist?
So, it's Charlie Tuna.
Oh, really?
Yeah, from Jurassic Five back in the day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I grew up being, we're a big fan. We have a friend who I was able to get him to come up here, so I feel like it would be a good act for Nevada City to see.
Well, that's perfect.
Yeah, and I feel like he would draw more than we could hold in our clubhouse.
He might draw more than you could hold in your parking lot.
We'll see, and we could change some of these numbers if we, you know, if we sell more tickets.
I mean, you're the security, how many do you anticipate fitting in there?
You know, we're thinking about 200, maybe, tickets sold, we're hoping for, and then 100 members will probably show up, so around 300. We are going to sell, we're going to pre-sell the tickets, so we will have a good idea of who will be coming, yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like that would probably be, we'd be happy with that. Could be more good lessons.
Sure, sure, sure. What's the square footage of that area?
I should, I should know that, but I feel like, yeah, I can get back to you on that.
I've been to events there, you know. New Republic had events, and there were some other just, you know, parking lot stuff. It's pretty crowded in there. You could fit a decent amount of people in there.
Yeah, the area we, I submitted a map to, I have some maps.
Yeah, yeah, we got it.
Yeah, the area that we mapped out is pretty large. I feel like all we're going to have is a small stage and then two trucks in there, and the rest is just people.
You had me at lobster roll. I'm, so.
Well, I'm so glad to see something lively and interesting happening in Seven Hills.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, we've talked a lot about how do we put some shine onto Seven Hills the way downtown always has, and this is the exact kind of thing. And you got someone from the Jurassic Five.
Yeah.
Which is not the nickname of the city council of Nevada City. It's actually a respected hip-hop group. So, I'm very excited and all in favor.
All right, let's take, let's take a vote on that one. Roll call vote.
I've got to get a motion first.
Let's get a mo, you know what? Thinking about it, I feel like we should get a motion first.
I move that we accept this proposal as is.
I second.
There you go. We've got a motion by Councilmember Fleming, a second by Vice Mayor Sisi, and now we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sisi?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks a lot, guys. Thanks for coming, guys. Yeah, yeah, thanks for doing this.
Friday.
Business item eight is a consideration of an award to order, to paychecks in the amount not to exceed, I guess, $27,656.56, and authorize the city manager to execute any contracts or related documents for payroll and online time card services. Brittany, here you are. Would you like to present this?
Yes, please. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. We currently use paychecks for our payroll processing system, and our method of timekeeping is on paper, on a timesheet, and so there's a lot of manual processes that go into that. In lieu of us growing in staff and modernizing our processes and being in alignment with our embedded strategic initiative of technology, we would like to add this module on to our current paychecks module so that we can move to electronic timekeeping and scheduling. So I'm here tonight to ask you if you would award this purchase.
Great. Any, yeah, I was going to say, no slideshow? Any public comment on this item? Okay, bring it to the table.
I, I move that we approve this contract.
I second it.
A lively discussion?
Unless, Lou, you wanted to say.
As you had something.
I heard a motion from Councilmember.
It's all improving our workflow. It's all creating more capacity by useful application of technology. It's all good.
Yep.
We don't have to be so historic.
Or hysterical.
Heard a motion from Councilmember Peterson, a second from Councilmember Fleming. We'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice Mayor Sisi?
Yes and yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yep.
Motion carries.
Boom.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Brittany.
Thanks, Brittany.
Back from the ringing endorsement from the Greater Cement Hill Neighborhood Association.
You slipped them some money, obviously.
People like the guy.
Everybody likes him. He's likable.
That's amazing.
Business item number nine, consideration of, one, an award of professional forestry services contract with either Tub Sud or Tub Sud Incorporated.
Tub Sud.
Tub Sud?
Tub Sud, sounds right.
See, this, this doesn't have the umlaut, so I was baffled.
It's the Swedish chef.
Tub Sud Inc. for registered professional forester services to accomplish tasks of the Deer Creek Hazardous Fuels Project in an amount not to exceed $44,730. And, two, authorize a project contingency not to exceed $5,270, and authorize the city manager to execute any contract or related documents. Evan, what do you got?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. This item, I will provide some context for and then explain what this purchase is for. Just so folks at home and you all here are, you know, for sure, understanding what project we're talking about. This is the Nevada City Hazardous Fuels Project, not the other ones that are going on in the county or Lower Deer Creek or these other names. It's our Nevada City proper one, which is around Providence Mine Road, the tech center area, the city property, that includes the Tribute Trail, our wastewater treatment plant, some critical infrastructure, and the schools. So, it's really, you know, Nevada City proper, right in the wooie. It's anchored by great roads, access to your resources in. And this project, you know, was originally, as most of you know, brought up from the community, the Deer Creek South Side Firewise Community, really had a, you know, play in this, getting this together. So this is all part of that project, and we had the planning grant from SNC, which was great. We have a planning document. We completed that grant, or completed with that, and the next step was implementation. So we've been a little creative in how we got funding for that. This funding directly is coming from CHIRP, which was then funded by PG&E. So it's strengthening our partnership with CHIRP, and it would allow us to hire a professional forester, contract with a RPF, Registered Professional Forester, to oversee the project, help implement the project, and coordinate all these little pieces that have kind of come together through these different grants, including our city fire fuels crew that's supported by Measure C, the CHIRP hand crew that they've been standing up, and possibly CAL FIRE. So, a lot of different tables or players at the table, and this contract would really help us execute the implementation of this project on a much timelier manner, much more effectively and efficiently. So it's a critical piece of the puzzle that you would be allowing the city manager to execute contract for. I'm happy to answer any other questions about this contract, this project, but really excited and have heard great community support to get this project off the ground and see implementation. The city crew's actually been beginning some of the low-hanging fruit of this project.
Wow.
But this forester would really allow us to move a little bit faster and get into those more technical treatment units that are in the hazardous fuels plan. So, that is the reasoning behind it, and we had three, we had an RFP out, and we had three companies apply for it, and we, you know, ranked them internally, and Tub Sud was the one that was highly, lowest cost as well, and had the best proposal.
Wow.
Per the committee.
I think so.
Yeah.
Any public comment on this item?
Further piece of history, just a bitter one. It was funded by the Sierra.
Sierra Nevada Conservancy.
Thank you. And with a full expectation that implementation funding grant would have followed that planning grant, but the state got some sideways on budget, so that money did not appear, which was an area of significant concern for the Deer Creek South Side community, and we had to really scramble to figure out how to fund this really critical piece of work. So, it's one of the things that, you know, our great city manager and our staff does, is that flexibility and adaptability in finding funds and putting this together so that we can actually execute this on this project. And this is a big part of it. We have to have the forester in there through environmental issues and stuff so that we make sure the work is done according to standards, but I think it's really important, and I just really applaud the efforts of staff under the guidance of our fabulous city manager to, to be that creative to get this work done, because it is really important. So, absolutely support this as the next step in completing that really important project. Did I say really important enough?
I think so.
Okay.
I feel like it's important. Thanks, Gary. Doug?
Yeah, this is, I, I just, I mean, to the point of cobbling together different funding to make this happen is very exciting, because I thought it was going to be two more cycles with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. They lost their funding last year. This cycle, they have $4.1 million for the whole territory, which, you know, and they do love to fund things that they did planning on, but, you know, the chances of us getting that money this time are probably slim to none, or just slim, it's not to none. But, you know, the fact that you've gotten some CHIRP money through PG&E, some CAL FIRE, I really, that just shows what the former mayor was saying about the due diligence and the ability to make things happen with whatever you have in front of you. So, you know, when we first were talking about this, this, the implementation side of this, we thought it was going to be a million two, a million five, and you guys have figured out how to do it for a lot less, and that is huge. I mean, significantly less, right? Like, less than half of that, right? I think.
I, we're definitely saving a lot of money.
Okay, I don't want to, I don't want to commit you.
Some of it is through the fuels crew that's supported by Measure C.
But that's still, you know, that's still getting it done, so I'm, I'm really happy about this, and, you know, Nancy and I, Nancy Weber and I worked on the original planning grant, and so Nancy will be really happy. I hope she's listening at home. This is going to make her, her month, I think, so, thank you. Thank you, Evan.
Well, first of all, we've been working on this since before I was elected to the council, and I'm so glad to see it actually happening on the ground, off the paper, onto the ground. Secondly, there's a force multiplier here where we're using CHIRP, so we're giving them experience, so we're helping our Nisinon community. I do have one question. The company is based in Germany, I believe. Who is our local contact? When things go wrong, how quickly can we get to them?
Sending them to Germany.
And how's your German?
Don't worry, they have a local office in Grass Valley with all local folks.
Really?
And they originally purchased, it was a switcheroo, but they're all locally, you know, based, but the company is international, as you can tell by the name.
Wow.
Was there a second part to that question?
That was a good answer. Thanks. I know that the Firewise community in that area is super engaged, and I hope that their knowledge and expertise of the areas is brought into the mix as well. Otherwise, it just sounds great and necessary, and thanks for the work you all did on this.
Absolutely, and I'm always happy to meet with them and drive around and look at things.
You know, you know those guys, right?
Exactly, I've already got it.
Yeah, good.
They might love him more than the Summit Hill people do.
Great.
I move that we approve this contract as well.
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Peterson and a second by Councilmember Fleming. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Cece.
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, council. Thank you.
Our last business item for the evening is a consideration of the Third Amendment to the employment agreement for city manager between the City of Nevada City and Sean Grayson. It'll be presented by our deputy city attorney, Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I am here to present the Third Amendment for our city manager. As you guys are aware, the original contract for the city manager was signed in 2022. Since then, it's been amended twice, once in 2022, adjusting for salary consideration and educational consideration. The salary consideration was for, to bring the, in line with the management and, forgive me, supervisory group, MOU, to bring it in line with the yearly increases to adjust for that. The Second Amendment was signed in 2023, similarly for salary increases. Additionally, there was appointment terms, health insurance, vacation leave and severance and certification pay in the Second Amendment. And now with the Third Amendment, we are also asking for, again, a salary increase to bring it, to bring it in line with the MOU that was signed with the rest of the staff, and also with some other benefits, including deferred compensation, which would be an additional two hundred per pay period, and then also vacation leave for up to forty hours, forgive me, for, per pay period. So with that, we are asking for an approval for the Third Amendment for our illustrious city manager who seems to be doing an amazing job.
Thanks, Nancy.
Of course.
Do we have any public comment in the room on this topic?
In the room?
In the room. We have other public comments that's not in the room. Seeing none, okay. Gary?
Would you like me to go?
Yeah.
So I, you know, I think this is really interesting. I'm going to play my experience card here, you know, having had, worked for about twelve city managers over the course of my career. Some of them I actually liked, and Sean happens to be one of them. I think it's really, some really important understandings here at a point when Sean came in and we hired Sean in a very public, open process, so that we could get the experience we need to right a ship that was, was in difficulty. And Sean came in and began to take care of business very clearly, very adeptly. One of the first things that Sean did was establish an amazing strategic plan, which was developed with, now with the, with the update to the strategic plan, there are only over fifteen hundred data points provided by the community on which we built this plan, which of course identified fire as the key, the key piece. But we have taken that plan and, under Sean's leadership, operationalized it in a way I've never seen done. It guides everything we do, every staff report connects to it, and it is, it is our driving force, and it's, it's a very good document, a very effective document, and with the update that we just did, it's a very relevant document. So we've had great direction. And then the ability to bring staff, we, actually, I believe for five minutes, we're a hundred percent staffed in the last couple of years. I don't think I've ever worked anyplace where that happened. I really don't. So, you know, that, one of the pieces for us was fiscal accountability, and, you know, I've told the story many times how I, I came on board because you couldn't read a budget, and it took us three years to, to figure that out. But there's just some amazing things that have happened in that context. And one of them is, over the last three years, is growing the general fund budget by twenty-seven percent. And I don't know who else does that, but twenty-seven percent. And I know some of it's Measure C, but a lot of it was doing the work of getting the money that was owed to the city and doing that work. But that allowed not only Sean to get the percentage increases that everybody else gets, but it allowed us to start to elevate the pay for staff so that we became competitive in our region. One of the real difficulties for us was that, that people were coming on board and, and getting trained and going to the sheriff's department because it paid more, or going to Grass Valley because it paid more, and we've leveled that out and been able to really provide some, some credible raises for the entire organization, which makes for a stronger, better, healthier organization. And that's all about raising the money to do that. And so every penny of every raise that has been given was created under Sean's leadership. The other thing is, is two, over the last three years, about fifteen million dollars in grants into our, into our little city. We freaking built an eleven million dollar bridge, you know, who does that? It's amazing. And, and people will say, yeah, Brian built the bridge. Of course he did, and Bill Falcone built the bridge, but, you know, it takes a leadership to get those things done. And, and that's what we pay for here, and that's what we got. And you do get what you pay for. And I spent a lot of time working with, with the ever, ever appreciated Evan and developing the entire fire side of this house. What we were able to fund went from zero to one point two five million in a year to fund that program. And recently, with the retirement of, of the fire chief, you know, we've been able to take those salary savings, which on Transparent California were listed at forty-eight percent greater than the city managers. We were able to take those salaries and put that back into fire and register through those jobs so that our fire program is even more robust. So all of this creativity, all of this work, I'd give you more money if I could, Sean, but, you know, I'm, I'm of the opinion that, and, and I hear this on the street everywhere I go, about how good we are as a city now. We've got some letters to that, you know. Our citizens, overall, we are in touch with our community. Our citizens know who we are, what we do, because we engage them, we ask them, we tell them, our community is fine with you and with us and what we're doing, because they understand. So with all of that, I absolutely support this contract and hope you hang around.
Well said. Oh, I got to follow that?
Yep.
What he said, and then some. So, you know, you know, I think people need to get paid what they're worth, and, you know, in my mind, after seeing what Sean has done over the last four-plus years, four-plus, three-plus, four-plus?
Two-plus.
Three-plus years, it's been nothing short of spectacular. I mean, the city has come so far, we've figured out our fee system, we figured out all the property we own that we're not getting paid for. We've, we've righted the ship, and all that is savings, and all that goes in there. And one thing you didn't mention about the strategic plan was, there's a budget tied to that strategic plan, and that's amazing. When you can attach dollars to, you know, CPIs and things like that, that's a real, you know, strategic plan, and it's a real path forward, and, and that's how we're executing, you know. People give us a lot of credit on the council, but, you know, a lot of the credit goes to Sean, I mean, most of the credit goes to Sean. You just make us look good, you know, and, and like you say, if it works out well, we take credit. If it goes bad, we blame you, you know, and that's worth a lot of money right there. So, oh, I, I could go on and on and on, and I just, I won't unless somebody has a problem with this, with this raise, you know. I will talk to anybody who, who doesn't believe that this is, and I don't think there's anybody, maybe one person. And so I support this a hundred percent.
Doug?
I also support this. You don't judge a city government by how few people it employs, or how hard it works them, or how little it pays them. You judge it by how effective the city is. And we have been super effective. We've built a bridge. We fixed a terrible traffic hazard on Broad Street. We have sewer and street repairs. The number of kids in the pool is, at Pioneer Park is wonderful. We are decreasing serious problems with homelessness. And we, because of our, our approach to fire safety, we may actually qualify for some possible reduction in fire insurance. All of that is possible because we have great staff. And the reason we have great staff is because they are hired and managed by our manager. And that's why I think he deserved this raise, and by God, you better take that vacation.
Yes.
I got, I was sent some remarks from our, our missing colleague, Councilmember Fernandez, and I'm going to read them now. Dear colleagues and community members, I'm sorry I can't be with you tonight. Despite that, I want to be sure my voice is part of this conversation because it's an important one. I'm writing in strong support of agenda item number ten and the approval of the Third Amendment to city manager Sean Grayson's employment agreement. I've said this before, when I first joined this council five years ago, Nevada City was, no joke, still running on Windows ninety-eight. City Hall was struggling, staff morale was low, things felt highly politicized, and a lot of decisions seemed to be based more on rumors and relationships than on real process or purpose. Honestly, I remember thinking, what did I just get myself into? Since then, things have stabilized considerably, and what we have now is a very different city government. The culture inside City Hall has become more focused and grounded. We started building systems that actually support the work of local government and serve the people of Nevada City. That progress didn't just happen, it took clear, steady leadership and a serious commitment to getting things done. Sean Grayson has brought us exactly that kind of leadership. He's helped move us into modern governance, cleaning up outdated systems, improving transparency, strengthening internal operations that had long needed attention, and supporting council intending to timely issues such as emergency response and fire, infrastructure, housing, public art, and so much more. The work he's doing is essential. It's the kind of behind-the-scenes work that holds everything together. Is Sean perfect? No. He's human. He's got prickly edges sometimes, and he can be blunt, but what he brings to this role is a tremendous depth of knowledge, vision, follow-through, and a serious commitment to doing the work. He shows up and gets it done, and we are better off for it. And if we want to attract and retain high caliber leadership, we have to be willing to back that with fair and appropriate compensation. That's exactly what this amendment reflects. I've read the public comment and accompanying union article in opposition, and while everyone is entitled to their opinion, it's also important to recognize when commentary is driven by something other than fact. It's clear the author doesn't fully understand what's been happening inside the city or what it takes to keep it running well. We're not the same Nevada City we were a few years ago, and that's because of the work that's been done by this council, the one before, and by Sean Grayson. Sean has helped us move forward with strength and integrity, and I believe that's worth investing in. Thanks, Councilmember Daniela Fernandez.
Oh, very nice.
It's, it's way better than what I got.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you should have gone last.
I'm going to look at my notes, but I feel like everyone's said the things. Our general fund has grown, our budget is balanced, our excellent staff has been given well-deserved raises, so hopefully they'll stick around. We've had constant community engagement. Our strategic plan is being followed, and we've seen great results, particularly in fire fuels mitigation, fire readiness, which the community has told us again and again should be our top priority. Here's the personal part. I appreciate having someone who grew up here coming back to strengthen the city when he could make more money elsewhere. He's here because this is his home, and I relate to that very much. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Love fest, love fest.
Absolute love fest. Do I have a motion to approve the love fest?
Let me approve. I second that.
We've got a motion from Vice Mayor Cece and a second by Councilmember Peterson.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cece.
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
It's a great team ever. It's good. Put it out there once a year. The rest of the time.
And just for like half a day. We got reports and future agenda items. Sean, why don't you start us off?
Awesome. On the tail end of that, I would like to thank the council for everything they do here. I rarely would say this, but more important than the council, the community, who votes to put you in here for their clear direction on the things that are important to them. And I love that we're a place that, good, bad, or indifferent, people are going to keep telling us what they think is right, and it doesn't matter if I like it, you know? We want to hear it. So, my office is right above the entranceway. If you can't find me, you can throw a rock at the window. People have, I, I mean it rhetorically, but people have. But throughout tonight, we, we saw a number of different departments, and we have a pretty amazing team. About half of our team was here through the turmoil, and amazing group of people that saw this ship, as the analogy goes, they stayed on board. They didn't jump ship, they, they kept it afloat, and many of them, we've had the opportunity to help train and develop and move up. Like Brittany went from accounting technician to finance supervisor, and now is our finance manager, and, you know, I, I, like Gary said about me, I hope she stays, because she's wonderful and talented and is going to do great things for this community. So, you know, when you see the folks out in the gray shirts, that's Public Works and Water Wastewater, they're making sure that your streets are safe and water's going in the right pipes and sewage is going in the right pipes, which is always important, that you not mix those pipes. When you see those fluorescent yellow shirts out there, those are Safer From Wildfire OES crews that are out there, you know, doing vegetation management and things like that. Evan almost always wears that wonderful blue shirt because it matches his watch. He's got a cool blue watch. You know, we have an amazing police department, and we've had an opportunity to move people up there as well. Chief Foss isn't here with us tonight, but Lieutenant Mason, one of our most senior city employees here this evening, and we've had the opportunity to promote him and a couple of sergeants and, and.
He's one of the ones that hung around, right?
Exactly, one of the ones that hung around and kept, kept this place afloat. You know, we have an amazing fire department, which is in partnership with the City of Grass Valley, but they staff our station and take care of this community twenty-four seven, and, you know, you see Brian every now and then, mostly for projects or problems, right? So he's either building something awesome, or you're here complaining, and it fluctuates that way, but, you know, he's literally crawled through the, you know, old granite storm drains that run underneath the city to make sure that, you know, we're doing things right for this community, and our planning department is amazing, and you wouldn't think planning in a, a city of three thousand would be, honestly, you wouldn't think it'd be that difficult. But we have one of California's first historical districts, and we have a mandate from our community to preserve what makes this place amazing, and some of that is bad history, and some of that is good history, and all of it is the, you know, environment that, that we live and work in. So across the board, we have a pretty amazing team, and they're all wearing a lot of hats, and I do appreciate that you approve my contract, but more importantly, I appreciate that you approve the contracts for all of our bargaining units, getting them closer to pay parity with our competitors. I don't like using that term, but they are, right? And I don't ever want our folks to leave for somewhere else. We should be, you know, competitive and pay and a better place to work, and I think, I think we're getting there. So, thank you for letting me ramble there a little bit. Council meetings move to, back to Wednesday's next month, so our next meeting is August thirteenth. Before that meeting, there are several opportunities for our public to engage on some specific topics. Our community service committee will meet August fifth to hear presentations about our skate park bid process. The meeting after that on the thirteenth, the council will hear that, hopefully have some folks on board to start that. Our Public Arts Commission meets on August sixth. They'll be selecting art for the September installation here at the Champ Hall Gallery. We still have one more Hot Summer Nights next Wednesday, the thirtieth, and the last Friday Art Walk is the next, or is that same week, on Friday, August first. Looks like the weather's going to hold out for us. It's been, I would say, unseasonably reasonable, which is great. Come join us for those events, because I think the other shoe's going to drop and it might get pretty hot after that. And that is all I have this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Sean. Gary, what do you got?
Let's see. Well, I did go to, what's the name of the thing that we do now? The Climate Change Collaborative?
The Western Nevada County Climate Change Coalition.
And we're working on mission and vision, but we discovered we can't use the word science and climate, so it's an interesting effort. It is. It's, it's an interesting coalition. We'll see, we'll see where it goes, but it is stuck in the, in that place where we are with beliefs about climate science, and it's going to get interesting and, I hope, productive. So I did that. I wanted to sign on to, to help get it started right, and we'll see if that's possible. Let's see, did that. Thank you, Doug, for covering the Fire Safety Advisory Committee. It was my joke, I got sick, I couldn't go, so Doug, it was his first meeting, so I threw him into the fire. And, but by all accounts, it was a very good meeting. So, I will, at Summer Nights was a blast, hanging out with, seeing folks, and I love the city tent out there. It's, it's just located right outside of City Hall. First night, of course, the ever-present, always-popular Evan is there, but Camille was there, and of course, Sutter, our defensible space ambassador dog was there, who visited my home today in a, in a tour. My task list just gung on. But it's great, and then last night, we had the pocket park out there, so it's just a great information. just a great informational piece. It's right in location that people pass through. So it's just really great. A lot of, a lot of interactivity, a lot of very positive stuff.
And we had information about Jerry Bash, which is coming up.
Oh, Lon was was pimping.
August 2nd.
You know, handing out.
Right. Get your tickets now.
Yeah. I don't need one.
Best seat in the house.
Can I?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't test me, man.
Oh, me? Um, yes. So, thank you for for uh drawing me into the Fire, the Fire Safety Advisory Committee. It was a really, I I was honored to be a part of that. It's a great group of people. Um, and, you know, I learned a lot, and I realized that everybody on the on the committee is very knowledgeable about what they know about fire and that I have a lot of work to do to get up to speed. But, you know, the 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 things we, you know, I just checked in on all the things that we're supposed to be doing, and we're doing all the things we're supposed to be doing. Yeah. Some of the, uh, some of the stuff that we're working on is um more of the public outreach side of things and some evacuation planning, things like that. So that's coming down the pike. But um, great committee. It, we're doing well. Um, there wasn't a lot on the agenda to really talk about, so that's that's all I got. Thanks.
Uh, Lon and I, who just vanished, uh, Lon and I met with CHIRP on the 10th to go over to the Foundry and look at a few uh Nisanon artifacts that are on display there and discuss what we need to do with them. And that's an ongoing process. Um, they're thinking of refreshing the whole display, and we talked about what that front end, what that end of our entrance to the Foundry will look like when it's done. And so we'll probably hold off doing anything actually concrete until then. But we have made that contact. They do know the artifacts are there, which was a revelation to them. Um, the other thing is that I got this today, my WM bill, my waste management bill, and I was shocked to see that I owe a great deal more than I thought I would because I had applied for the senior discount. What I forgot to do was specify that I want a smaller bin for my garbage. You have to do that, or they won't apply the senior discount. So it's this afternoon, I drove out to their offices of Loma Rica, and we figured it all out. And I will be getting my smaller garbage bin and still have my big green waste bin and my big recycling bin. And they said it will be prorated back to that rate from the moment I get those new bins. But if anyone else out there is having trouble, uh, I sympathize with you. And it would be a really good idea if there was a little bit better educational effort on the part of WM to inform especially seniors and disadvantages people how they could get that discount.
Here, here.
Good info. Thanks, Lou. Um, since the last meeting, I saw a lot of good music. Uh, both at the first Friday Art Walk, there were musicians playing in some of the shops, and uh at Summer Nights, at Hot Summer Nights. Um, still not used to it. Uh, heard a lot of good bands playing on the street. It's been uh very exciting and fun. I'm going to be talking more about uh music at the uh Public Arts Commission meeting. That was on the 6th, you said, Sean?
Yes.
August 6th, I'll be talking to that group who have done such excellent work. Public Arts Commission, responsible for the Painted Pianos, the Champ Gallery, um Miriam's Awesome Mosaic going up on Argol Way, went through them. Uh, another accomplishment of Sean's uh stay with us. Um, the Public Arts Commission, everybody be a fan of them. I am. Uh, Sean, I'm looking around this table, and I think to be a team player, you are going to need to get some glasses.
My eyes agree with you.
Lieutenant, can you help him out? Do you guys have similar? Just pop them on the head, and then we'll be all set. Uh, that's all I got. Thank you, Sean, and everybody. And Daniela, we miss you, but thanks for sending your words.
Nice job.
Do I have a?